Good evening. It's seven o'clock. And I'd like to call the meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Jacobson?
Present.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mayor Pressing? Here. The first item is approval of the minutes of the previous meeting, that's January 7th, 2013.
I move approval.
Okay. Motion by Dennis Roberts and seconded by Eric Jacobson, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any additions or corrections to the minutes? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay. We'll move on to petitions and communications. If anyone in the audience would like to address the Urbana City Council, please fill out one of these little cards and give it to the city clerk, Phyllis Clark. Okay, the first person is Rex Bradfield. And I think you've been here before, but please state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes.
You bet. Rex Bradfield, 2101 and 1/2 Pond Street, Urbana, Illinois. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for the honor of appearing here. My comments are very brief. I am speaking to you on ordinance number 201301004. The zoning redistricting by Howard Wakeland. I've known Howard since 1966, and I have found his integrity, his love of life, his ability to do anything that he does in the highest quality. I've surveyed his properties for him, and many of the properties are in this zoning B2 district in different areas. In my 40 years of surveying, I've never surveyed property that was any better taken care of, had such policing of the business of the apartment buildings, and they are always well-maintained and always well-watched. In addition, any time that I surveyed in his area, I never worried about anything happening to my equipment, or to me. He takes care of his business. Howard has been the Associate Dean of the University of Illinois. When I first came here, he is, was an Associate Dean of one of the top five university engineering colleges in the world at that time. His integrity is approached by none, myself included. I strongly urge that the council consider his request. I think that he has provided the city of Urbana with the type of landlord that the city of Urbana would like to have with all their developments. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Carletta Donaldson.
Thanks. So, Carletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookens Drive in Urbana. I'd like to first say thanks to all who participated in the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s Days of Service in the last couple of days, especially the ones who worked with our youth. Special thanks to Libby, we saw you on television. I know that was not your goal, but I would like to thank you for your time yesterday as well. I'd also like to thank all who contribute, but special thanks to Alderman Eric Jacobson and his wife, State Representative Naomi Jacobson, excuse me, whose general contribution, generous contributions for many years make it possible for the two alternate Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Living the Dream Scholarship recipients to each receive a one-time $500 scholarship for college. So, to the Jacobsons, thank you very much. I also encourage all to listen to the panel discussion on WILL-TV radio website for the last film, Soul Food Junkies, and consider, because it was briefly discussed last week, when restaurants, especially fast food restaurants and stores request permits and licenses to build in the city, we need to understand that we cannot fight obesity in children and adults when the food offerings have no or very little nutritional value. And for the most part, a lot of the fast food restaurants are being placed in low-income areas, so I'm strongly against that. This may be a strong action item, and of course, there was discussion about people contacting their city councils, so just to make sure that you do listen to it, take a few minutes to listen to it so that you know where people might be going this year with that topic. And finally, it is understood that the Ellis Drive subdivision sewer issue will be a topic of discussion on the agenda for next week. If I understood the discussion from last week, and in talking with other residents in Urbana, this is a situation that needs to be fully researched and discussed, as well as for other neighborhoods identified that may have had the same problem in their past, or may have the same problem in the near future because of the age of their neighborhood and/or the way the sewer lines have been put in. And this must be clarified for neighborhoods in the entire city if possible. And just a reminder, absentee ballot requests have started for the city of Urbana primary elections, which will be held on Tuesday, February 26th. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Taylor.
I don't need to sign in this way, I did that way, right? My name is Susan Taylor, and I live at 606 West Michigan Avenue in Urbana. And I'm here to discuss Plan Case 2195-M2. I appreciate the opportunity to address the council members, and this plan case is something that I would read what I have written, and I gave the clerk a copy of what, my remarks. With reference to a residential neighborhood hammered in recent years by expanding Carl Hospital facilities, tonight's agenda item regarding Plan Case 2195-M2, Howard Wakeland has filed his third request, the first denied in 2008, and the second withdrawn at the end of 2012, to rezone 11 parcels from R2 single-family residential zoning to B2 neighborhood business arterial zoning. This request has the potential of expanding and accelerating non-residential business activity just north of University Avenue, an area that is witnessing radical change, both in Champaign and in Urbana. Mr. Wakeland is one individual requesting considerable freedom to choose to pursue business opportunities as they may arise in this limited but representative space. That's really what I'm worried about. And I think we all should be, because it's a sensitive part of our community. I respectfully request our Urbana City Council members to take the first step tonight to protect existing homes of Urbana residents in the King School, King Park neighborhood by denying Mr. Wakeland's application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carol McCusick.
Carol McCusick, 1907 North Cunningham Avenue. I spoke to an older person about what I've been talking to, my older person, about what I've been talking to the council for maybe the last six or seven times, the municipal electric aggregation program, about the, you know, was the council interested in having a presentation on the program that was an agenda item unto itself? And in appreciation of a paper I wrote with questions about, a five-page paper of questions about the program, and and he said, you know, it would take citizen interest. So, it's not just people with electric bills who should have a say, or people who've opted into the program, or who didn't opt out at the beginning. They'd be interested, but it's about how, what we can do with our current contract, which is, I mean, it's a retail power price, you know, a good price or a cheap price, and about being prepared for a future contract, because the contract that we have is, lasts for two years. This isn't an issue that is going to go away. We've set up an administration for this in the city government. And I would like to share the paper of questions, my questions electronically. And if you write to me at rankus, that's R-A-N-K, and then chorus, C-H-O-R-U-S, at gmail dot com. You might write to me twice, I mean, if I sent it to you, and then if you did something to contact the council, you could tell me that you did, just there'd be a way to find out how, to measure that, if there's any pressure on the council at all. The municipal electric aggregation program produces money for its management, and the money, right now, it looks like it's being used by Scott Tess and Mike Monson. I'm basing this on what I see at the residence page, and also by the reports in the Sustainability Advisory Commission from, Scott Tess is the Environmental Sustainability Manager. It's being used to spread the savings to people moving to town, telling people how to opt into the program. And I'm asking, shouldn't it be used for the questions in my paper? So, I'm wondering, is, you know, like, is there any potential to have your own grid? Or, you know, what is, what does Abbott do for the university, for example? And I want to note that one thing that didn't get built into the contract with Home Field, but it was contemplated when we had a Plan of Operation Governance, was having them help with some information about energy. And it didn't, we get, I think, you know, these things should be clarified by, by a presentation item, but I think we get 10 cent, no, 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 no. 10, a tenth of a cent per kilowatt hour from every customer who pays their bill.
You have one minute, Ms. McCusick.
So, wouldn't that be good to figure out, to use, to figure out what stands in the way of having our power sourced renewably, sourced renewably, as a, you know, that that's actually what turns on the power? So, after that, many of the things, I, in the process of work, of looking at the municipal electric aggregation, something struck me that, I guess I hadn't been checking, I've been talking about checking minutes, but I don't think I've been checking them myself that much. So, one thing I'm noticing is that in the approved minutes, or draft minutes that are approved, you just have the name of the number for the ordinance, and that doesn't, the part, the mid, the ordinance itself is not in the minutes.
Thank you very much.
Would anybody like to have, allow me a little more time?
I don't see a motion to do that, but thank you very much. Dorothy Carter.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dorothy Carter, I live at 1505 North Romine, Urbana. And I'm talking 2013, that's 01004. And this is coming from the Dr. Ellis Subdivision neighborhood, the entire neighborhood. We, the vast member of the King Park neighborhood, object to the rezoning of the west side of Lincoln Avenue. We additionally request the city planner remove the area note for business on the future land used map along the west side of Lincoln, and keep this area as a residential from Church Street north to Kings Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reverend Dr. Evelyn B. Underwood.
I, I am Evelyn Underwood, 1309 West Tremont Street in Urbana. The Honorable Mayor Laurel Lunt, Pressing? I hope I said that.
Pressing.
Pressing?
Pressing.
Pressing. Did I say it correctly?
It's fine, it's fine, whatever.
No, I want to do it correctly.
That's fine.
Okay. Read January 7th and 14th, 2013 presentations by Dr. Ellis Subdivision homeowner slash resident. Dear Honorable Mayor Pressing, I messed up again. At the January 7th, 2013 meeting of the city council during our Dr. Ellis Subdivision presentation about our sewer problems, two questions came out of the presentation for you and the council to answer for us on January 28th, 2013. One, have any other Urbana taxpayers or neighborhoods had to pay or be reimbursed under this ordinance or the one prior to 2007? Two, what happened to the commitment of the city of Urbana to fix the sewer problem in Dr. Ellis Subdivision 20, or 25 years ago? Are the records available, and may we review the records? Also, during our presentation at the city council's committee of the whole meeting, several questions were asked that we need, we need you to have Director of Public Works, William R. Gray, to answer in his formal presentation on January 28th, 2013. One, did the developer, Norm Patton, have his permit when he built Dr. Ellis? And did the city do the inspection? Two, are all city sewer lines placed on private property throughout the city? Three, please provide mapping of the whole city of Urbana sewer system. Four, provide, please provide a list of homeowners' reimbursements paid by the city of Urbana. Five, is this the only ordinance on this subject matter? Six, is this the only council policy on this subject matter? Respectfully yours, Bishop King James Underwood and Evelyn B. Underwood and concerned citizens of Dr. Ellis Subdivision. I would like to say that I brought the letter to you, and I didn't put CC, mean carbon copy in the olden days, but I didn't provide a copy. And I know better, because I used to be a secretary. However, there were people who had me type the letter, and then other people said, no, you must give copies to the honorable city council members and/or, not, not and, but just or, older persons. So, I did, without doing C, or carbon, I mean, copy, I did bring them over and give them to each of you. So, it was last minute, because they said, no, I must do that, so I was just trying to do what the people were asking me to do. So, that's why I didn't put copy, so.
Well, we appreciate that, and we will try to get as many of them answered as fast as we can, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Carletta Donaldson wants to be recorded as opposed to ordinance number 2013-01-004. And Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood is opposed to that same ordinance, 2013-01-004, and she is representing Dorothy Carter and Elaine Owens of the Dr. Ellis Subdivision Neighborhood Crime Watch. Okay. Then we have Gloria Hendricks. Do you wish to speak? Is Gloria Hendricks here? Did I get the, did I get the name right? Okay.
Gloria Hendricks, 1214 West Tremont, Urbana. And thank you for allowing me to speak before the city council. I am against the ordinance 2013-01-004. But I also am supporting Evelyn Underwood with the petition about the sewers, because I wasn't at the last meeting, but there is great concern in the neighborhood, and I actually drove around trying to find out where they were. And I saw some of them in streets, a few in the alleys, and some on private property. So, I think that is something that the city council really need to investigate. These neighborhoods are getting older, and not only the neighborhoods, but many of the people live in those neighborhoods. And the cost factor is going to be quite high for some of us who are on fixed income. So, that is something I really hope the city council would truly look into and come back quickly with some information for the residents of the Ellis Subdivision. Because I am one of those that have a sewer on my property. And I've been noticing with various neighbors in the neighborhood, some of the expensive expenses that has occurred with those sewers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Bernadine Evans-Stake.
Hello, and thank you all. Well, I'm here for the zoning of the area that is residential and that is, might be business. I'm very much against that, because I think that Urbana really needs affordable housing. We have many people in Urbana who do need housing, and this is a perfect place to have it. It's a, it is a residential district now, and I think we should leave it that way. And I also think that it's very unfair to the people in this residential area and near it to take, change it to business. We also have a lot of people near, in, for instance, in King School and in King Park. So, I would hope that you would vote for affordable housing. And I wanted to read a little bit about it. This is just summing up. I took this out of, out of the journal, the Planning Commissioner's Journal. And it's summing up, "Investing in affordable housing does more than improve the quality of life for the local residents. It strengthens the local economy by creating jobs and fortifying a community's tax base. Providing affordable housing also yields economic benefits to local employers by making it easier to attract and retain workers. Communities can encourage the provision of affordable housing by making a use of a variety of policy tools at their disposal." And it also told, tells how people in, like in Rhode Island, where the voters approved some affordable housing. Anyhow, you don't lose money. You can make money with affordable housing, if you do it in the right way. And at the same time that you're making money for yourselves here, or for all of us, you can also, at that time, help people who need homes. And we are, in Urbana, want to have nice homes for everybody. We don't want to move business into, in there where we already have some homes. It wouldn't be fair to me, I wouldn't think it was right at all, if somebody, if we had to have business next to my home. So, I think we should consider that also. But I really appreciate being able to say a few words. Nice to be with you. And I hope we.
Bernie, I have a question.
Okay. Charlie Smythe has a question for you.
There's a question?
Yeah. Bernie, since, since you're on the Plan Commission that sent this to us, and it was a split vote, you know, in favor of doing something 5-2, as I understand it.
Yes.
Reading the, I read through it all very carefully. Now, you know, I can understand the feeling of preserving the housing that's there, but we also have a number of open lots, and we have property that faces, along Church Street, that faces the Water Company, which has an industrial, a light industrial zoning. I frankly don't know anybody who would deliberately build a house at this point across from the water plant, a residential. So, I'm, I'm, I'm very torn here. You know, do you actually see people actually rebuilding housing across from the water plant?
Not right across from the water plant, no.
But that's what you're, but, but that's what you're.
Well, there are lots of other spaces there besides right across.
But that's, that's, five of the lots are directly across from the Water Company there, that we're talking about, of the, of the 11 properties in this. So, I think five of them face the Water Company.
Well.
And four of them are, four of them are, I believe, four of them are empty, have been cleared.
Four of them have been cleared.
Four of them are clear, yeah, yeah. I used to have a babysitter that lived at the end of that block, so, I mean, I, I remember when there were houses there years ago.
I see. Well, I'm just so concerned about the fact that if we put business in there, then we're, we're taking everybody away. I mean, it's not, it's not just a few people, it's a lot of people. And I, I really, really think that I'm thinking about not having business there.
Yeah, I'm, but, but see, but see what I'm saying, is that there's a sub, there's a subset of property there that isn't going to go back.
That is all residential, right?
That's empty, that's empty. There's a section that's residential, still has houses on it, and there's a section that's empty.
Well, it might be empty, but it's, it's zoned residential.
Right.
So, it's probably been a bad thing to put that in there, close to residential. That's another thing, you know? It seems that when it's residential, we don't care about it at all. We just, we just go ahead.
Well, the thing is, we have, the Water Company is developed.
Like the Water Company, right there into the residential district.
Yeah, well, we're, we're looking at a historical situation. The Water Company was there, and, and residential development developed there. I, I don't know what the history of that is, but that's what we have on the books.
Do you think it would be a lot better to have a business there?
I'm thinking it might be a lot better to do a sub, a subset. And that's something I'll, I'll discuss with council later, where we look at just those empty lots.
Just those empty lots? I see. Well, it's good that you're looking at it carefully. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Viola Bradley, Bryce?
Bias.
Bias, okay, sorry.
Good evening. The reason you guys haven't heard from me is because I have been fighting cancer since 2006. During the time I've been fighting cancer, Mr. Wakeland's decides he'll just stop by my house unannounced. He don't call, he just stop by, just like he's, he's family or he's a friend. He's not. I read your statement that you, he wrote, that he, that I'm supposed to be preparing papers for him. He's a lie. I'm not preparing anything for him. I have no intentions of selling him my property. He says he's looking for the future of his kids. I have kids and grandkids that might go to university. You know, putting that property right behind me. I live at 903 West Hill Street. I have a right to live peacefully and serenity. I have a right to live in peace. If he wants this so bad, how would he like it if someone put it in his neighborhood right on the side of him, buy up the property around him and put it there? I've been living in this house for 20 years. This is my home. This is where I raise my kids. And according to the United States, you guys are supposed to be for the people, not just one person. About what he wants, and what he wants for his family, I have the same wishes for my family, but I also have the right to live in peace. I don't want the bars, restaurants, and all that around me. I don't want the bars, restaurants, and all that around me. Put it be around me, you're going to hear from me more and more. I'm going to call the police every day that they're noisy, every day. I don't want it around me. I shouldn't have to live like that. I am sick. Is it more because he has money? I'm poor and black? Is that the reason he's doing it? I'm a sick person. And when he said he didn't harass people, there was no harassment, he's lying there too. He was at people's house every day, every other day, coming, knocking on people's doors. Will you sell me my property? To me, that's a form of harassment. I've been ill, I'm getting better, but believe me, he's going to answer to that form of harassment. I'm looking into an attorney. I will not put up with it. And I'm expecting you, as my councilman, I pay taxes just like everybody else, to look out for me just as well as him. Now, do what you want to, but this is my home. I will never sell it to him. I would let it sit empty before I sell it to him. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Reverend Melinda Carr.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Reverend Melinda Carr, and I live at 211 West Tremont-Champaign. And good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I spoke a few weeks ago on behalf of the Ministerial Alliance of Champagne and Urbana and Vicinity. Last week I didn't speak, but recorded my name, so should be representing the Ministerial Alliance also. Today, I don't have a written document, but just wanted to speak for a few minutes and say regarding the Ellis subdivision issue, one, one issue, one item is on Monday eve, or Monday afternoon, Monday morning, I guess, Honorable Mayor and Representative for the Mayor of Champagne spoke, or read a proclamation for the cities, both the cities. And I thought I heard, as part of that, I didn't, I wrote a little note, but I didn't bring it with me. I think, I thought it was a reference to a quality of service or life of our residents, and that's so very important. And with this issue and the residents who have come forward, and some who've been in that neighborhood 50 years, and they're facing, you know, the issue of the sewer, and they're possibly facing some financial burden with this issue. And what's going to happen with the city when the, when you go forward and look at the report on the 28th, and consider what you're going to do going forward, and come up, coming up with maybe reimbursement program that's been on file in the past, increasing the reimbursement for the residents to be able to afford any problems they may have in the future. And also present the idea of having funds available or set aside for these residents to be able to afford any sewer problems that may occur. And I think one of the residents said, you know, because some are on fixed income, and they've invested their, you know, life savings into their properties, so to consider this as you look at this report. And another item is the developers that, you know, build properties, you know, build land, and build houses on land, I should say. What is their responsibility when it comes to building the, the houses? Do they have to have, you know, insurance? Because once they build, you know, they're gone. I mean, and, and this situation, you know, the council, the mayor, you're presented with an issue, and, you know, they're no longer in sight. And so there's something that needs to be done, as far as the developers too, whether they're required to do, and maybe look at this in the future so that these problems will be prevented. And when they're, you know, developing the, the houses for the residents, so they have a responsibility as well as you as the city. They shouldn't just have, you know, didn't walk away, and then, you know, the residents are left holding the bag, and you as the city are left holding the bag. So there should be some responsibility on the developers to make sure that things are in place. So I thank you for this time to speak.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to unfinished business, discussion of social service funding. We've met with the City of Champagne, and they said that one of the reasons that they decided not to allocate things to individual agencies was that they all seemed to have some kind of a conflict of interest. So that's one of the reasons they moved to a different system. But we talked about what are the things that we could work on together, and they may choose to finance things a different way than we do. Certainly, the article in the News Gazette just talked about the city's contribution, but left out the Cunningham Township contribution, which, you know, sort of makes the total be 300, over $300,000 from Urbana. So we, I think we have a good conversation going on with Champagne, and so we'll look to see how we can do maybe some projects that are strictly Urbana, and other projects that would be shared with Champagne if they cover people from both cities. So anybody have any other thoughts on, Brandon?
I mean, I, I just think it's wonderful that there's this dialogue. I think we all know that both cities are giving, caring communities, and I really appreciate that the elected officials, our colleagues in Champagne are willing to discuss it. And I think that we should really take this opportunity to work together. We can do more together than we can do alone. So I appreciate the conversations and look forward to hearing how they proceed.
And we did meet with, with the city before that discussion on social services, and there's a whole list of items that we work on with Champagne. In case anybody's under the impression that we don't work with Champagne, we've been working with Champagne for, you know, over 100 years, ever since they started, I think. Our, our big project was getting the university to come here, and that was a joint effort of the two cities. Okay, reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole, oh, you, did you want to say something? Oh, Diane.
Well, the question still remains, are we going to keep the same application process? Are we going to target or narrow down the list of needs? Are we going to change our process or maintain what we've been doing?
I think we want to change it, but that's up to the council when you have, when we start having the discussions about exactly how you want to do it. But I think part of the problem is lack of funding for some agencies that serve both cities, and Urbana really shouldn't be asked to be the only one that contributes. I'd like to see more of a shift toward making sure that all children who need preschool and can't afford it, their families can't afford it, that they get it. But that's going to take a lot of other agencies besides the City of Urbana just to take care of the need in Urbana. We met with the Chancellor's Group on Transformative Leadership, and the school districts gave a presentation. And they said that there are 154 children on the waiting list in Urbana. And so we're going to find out what is the, what exactly, how are they working with Head Start? And what is the total number of, of children who could benefit from that but can't do it now because their families can't afford it? And try to tackle that. But this is for all of us to discuss. But I think we've agreed that we want to change the way we're doing it. We just have to figure out how, how exactly we're going to do it.
Are we going to be scheduling a-
Yes, we'll have a study session, right.
Study session.
And I think we'll invite the new, the candidates for Urbana City Council to tune in on that, give them an early start. Eric.
So I think it's absolutely, you know, I mean, I'm not sure what's the very best idea, but I think it would be a splendid idea if Champagne and Urbana would jointly make a commitment for preschool, for affordable preschool for all kids. What I'm wondering is, can we, in preparation for that discussion, can we cost that out?
That, that's what we're going to be doing.
Because we know that it's doable. We know that in, in the northern European countries, in Sweden, for example, and Finland, there is universal affordable care from age one and a half or two. And, well, and Robert is saying school, not care. And it's, it's high-quality care. It is edu, yeah, it's education. The people who do it are real professionals. Now, their feeling is that by empowering parents to go into the workforce, that their society is just enormously more productive because of that. I also can hardly think of a better attraction for people to move here, for young couples to move here, than if this area, almost uniquely among all American cities, or, or city areas, would make such a commitment. So I, I just want to just state my, my enthusiasm for looking very seriously at, at that proposal.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Charlie?
Yeah, in ter, in terms of nitty-gritty, let's not forget the, the scoring system that, that Diane developed at one point, which, yeah, it's, it still exists, right?
It does, but which may or may not be relevant-
Right, yeah, we'll have to, I said, just keep in mind.
But we need something where we can have a consistent wave across council members, I think.
Right, so regardless, you know, whatever we decide, whatever we do, we need to make it, we can, yeah, we can, we need to standardize it so that it's a little bit easier for everybody to follow and understand. I'm a big fan of the, of the employment, summer employment program that Champagne is doing. I think that's a, that has an important, it fits right into the education mission. It's sort of like the other side of preparing young adults to move into the workforce. Why should they go to college? Why should they, you know, go to, get a technical degree of some kind, or apprenticeship in a trade, or something like that? You know, that, that's the kind of thing that, that I think is the other, the other end of, of the education process that begins with, with the preschool stuff. And, and like I said before, the preschool stuff is incredibly important. It's been shown in a number of recent studies how effective it is, how, how, how good an investment it is long-term. So, so we, we, we can't do wrong if we, even if we just put all of our money there. It's a good thing.
Dennis.
Yeah, I, I would also like to say that I think that young teen and pre-teen training for the trades, trade industries is very important. And having gone to some of the meetings coordinating the Parkland College and summer programs before they had started a couple of years ago, that some of the individuals in the trade unions themselves who were seeking to encourage and build this youth training program that's mostly now centered in Champagne, expressed a lot of concern that many people in the trade industries, and these people are making excellent wages and supporting good family lifestyles, are getting older and are reaching retirement age. And that there is a dearth of young people being, entering the trades and learning the trades. And I think that that aspect of support is another one that I would really hope that the City Council encourages and supports.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll have the study session probably early February. Okay, we'll move on to reports of standing committees. And, and I should say, it's, we're going to have more than one study session to figure this out. It's going to take a while, but we'll bring you some more information on where we are. You can ask more questions and we'll get further information. So we'll give it a really good investigation and discussion. Okay, Committee of the Whole, that was you, Dennis?
Yeah. All right, so I'd like to report from the Committee of the Whole that met last week on Monday, the 14th. We have several ordinances and motions that have been forwarded to the City Council for consideration, so I'm going to read them. First, ordinance number 2013-01-003, an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter 3, Section 3-43. And this increases the number of Class R2 liquor licenses for Anai Perez, which is also Roche, Roche's Moro Leon at 805 Phila Road. And for the committee, I move approval.
Okay, motion by Robert, seconded by Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Dennis.
All right. Next, we have a motion approving staff's policy recommendations regarding billing issues associated with the stormwater utility fee, which are, one, to allow the option of sending a single bill to governmental units that own multiple properties that are subject to the stormwater utility fee. Two, to charge owners of condominium units that have individual water meters a stormwater utility fee for one equivalent residential unit, that's an ERU. And three, send one bill to property owners who own adjacent parcels where one parcel does not have a water meter. These are efficiency items, and for the committee, I move approval.
Second.
Motion by Robert, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion?
Yes.
It's term.
Yeah, one, one last chance here to, to modify slightly the, the, the number three here, the send one bill. I still think it's a bad idea to, to bill those people with residential property that may have a half lot or something that's being used as additional space. I will remind everybody that, that, yeah, they might get two property tax bills, but if they were to combine the property and make it one contiguous property, they would pay one ERU. And, and, but their property tax bill would change to reflect their additional land. So the, the property tax amount is not a, is not a, is really not a relevant argument here. Because they're going to pay for the amount of property that they have, the space that they have. But because we didn't do this by size, we chose to do the simpler thing here, you know, we're, we're, we're going to tick off maybe 30 people that I don't think we have to. So, you know, I just think, I think you could leave the residential folks off that clearly have just a half, half property or something that is not developed, not going to be sold as a new, new space. It's not under speculation or something like that, but in use, give them a break.
Anyone else? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
No.
That motion carries. Dennis?
Yes. Lastly, ordinance number 2012-1122, an ordinance approving an agreement for the use of the right-of-way Hart Vascular Institute shuttle bus drop-off, Church Street between Kohler Avenue and Orchard Street. And for the committee, I move approval.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Charlie Smythe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Reports of special committees, I don't believe we have that. Reports of officers, anyone want to give a report?
Could I, could I make a report?
Dennis.
I'll say that I'm a special committee. I just wanted to report that the, the Urbana Sister City Committee program is-
I just wanted to report that the Urbana Sister City Committee program is sending a delegation to Malawi this week. They're leaving Wednesday, tomorrow. And four people are being sent. And the purpose of the journey is to initiate the new second grant that the city has received from Sister Cities International. You know that we've had a program going for two years to build bathrooms at private schools and to, and we built an ablution block at the local hospital in Zomba, our sister city in Malawi. That program is completed, but in the meantime, in October, the city was received a new grant for up to a hundred thousand dollars of work and participation and education in the city of Zomba. And this is called the Sino-African Initiative. This is a completely different grant. And we're one of three cities in the nation who've received this grant from Sister Cities International. And the interesting part about this is that it also ties in a connection with China and a city in China which we are working to establish larger relationships with. So, what's happening this weekend is that we're sending Mr. Christopher Stor, Mr. John Dimmitt, Mr. Scott Tess from the City Public Works Department, and Sam Smith from Cranert Center for the Performing Arts as representatives to, first to Zomba to look and talk with the community leaders there. And then they're going to be flown at the expense of Sister Cities International to a workshop in Nairobi, Africa. It's Nairobi, Kenya.
Kenya.
Got to get that right, get the rights date. Where there's going to be a three-day workshop, and at the end of that workshop, under the guidance of Sister Cities International leaders, they are going to come up with a plan and a contract to conduct improvements in the waste management program in the city of Zomba. And we expect that it will include educational journeys for the constituents, perhaps to China, and perhaps certainly to the United States to visit us and to learn more about proper waste management programs, which then they will hope to initiate in their community. So, I'm pretty proud, actually, to tell you that this is going to happen, and this is happening this weekend, they're going to be leaving. And when they come back on February third, they'll have a lot to tell us, so we probably will hear a debriefing about that journey in about two weeks.
I want to thank you, Dennis, for doing such a good job with Sister Cities. Urbana is famous in the Sister Cities International group for doing a good job.
We got some long legs now.
Okay, under new business, first are some appointments that I'm suggesting. The first is market, the Farmers Market Advisory Board, Hans Bishop, Kent Miles, Robert Kleis, Cynthia Johnson, and Stan Schut.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe and seconded by Robert Lewis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And then the Tree Commission, I'd like to appoint Carol Augsberger.
Second.
Okay, motion by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion?
Yep.
Yes.
I'm very excited that the Tree Commission is working on plans to create a heritage tree program. And I hope that Carol finds that rewarding work.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Next is ordinance number 2013-01-004, an ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of Urbana, Illinois, the rezoning of eleven parcels comprising 1.82 acres located south of Hill Street and west of Lincoln Avenue from R2, Single Family Residential Zoning District to B2 Neighborhood Business Arterial Zoning District. And we have Robert Myers to discuss this case.
Hi, everyone. My name is Robert Myers, and I'm the Planning Manager here with the City of Urbana. And I'd like to present some information about this case, which went before the Plan Commission in December, and they had a recommendation for you, which I'll get to in just a moment. We'll talk about public input, about the application itself, and some technical things. First, just to be clear, the application is to rezone eleven parcels. And I'm going to repeat the addresses here just because I want everyone to, in the listening audience, to understand which properties they are. It's nine oh six, nine oh eight, and nine ten, West Church Street, plus seven oh one, seven oh three, seven oh five, and seven oh seven, North Lincoln Avenue, plus nine oh three, nine oh five, nine oh seven, and nine oh nine, West Hill Street. Now, together, these are a little less than two acres. And the applicant, Mr. Howard Wakelin, owns nine of the eleven properties. Now, if you look at the map, let's see, probably the second map is better. This will give you a sense of where the properties are located. On North Lincoln Avenue, just north of University Avenue, just north of Illinois American Water, which borders on the south. And these parcels, again, are bordered by Hill Street, Lincoln Avenue, West Church Street extended, and then back up to Hill Street Court. Four of these properties are vacant lots. And Mr. Smythe alluded to three of those vacant lots fronting on West Church Street. West Church Street is, in terms of a street, it's more like built as a driveway, I would say. If you ever pull down that way, it's not a full-width street, just so you'll know and you'll understand. All of the lots on West Hill Street itself have single-family homes. And those are owned primarily by the applicant, Mr. Wakelin. But one, nine oh three, is owned by Viola Bradley, who spoke here this evening. Additionally, seven oh three, this is a property ownership map, all of the parcels here, circled in green, are the parcels in question. But the two properties that are hatched are ones not owned by the applicant that are part of the application. Under our zoning ordinance, actually, as long as fifty-one percent of the property owners are the applicants, they can apply for a larger area for the rezoning. Seven oh three, North Lincoln Avenue is owned by the Connerlys. So, at a public hearing, Mrs. Connerly spoke. And now, this evening, we have, Mrs. Bradley has also spoken. We also received two phone calls today. Actually, the first was from Viola Bradley, who said that she would plan to be here tonight. She does not support the rezoning. And second, from Peggy Brooks at Four Hill Street Court, who wants the neighborhood to remain single-family and said she was unable to attend. But the application is to rezone this from single-family residential to B2, General Business District. B2 General Business District is a step down from our typical corridor, B3, General Business District zoning. What I mean by that, it kind of bridges residential and commercial zoning. B2 Neighborhood Business District zoning will allow by right, for instance, single-family residential. It would allow by right apartments, it would allow by right duplexes and other, some other types of residential. But also, it would allow by right some neighborhood business as well. Just so everyone will know, it does not allow by right taverns, nightclubs, or liquor stores. Those are things that are not allowed by right in a B2 General Business District. The existing zoning in the area, what you'll see, what you see before you, the yellow that represents single-family residential zoning, to the south, actually, you have industrial zoning. The lots on West Church Street are bordering an industrial property. This is that Illinois American Water property. And then, north of Hill Street, you have, it's split between single-family residential zoning and then some B2 Neighborhood Business District zoning there as well, that pink, I'm sorry, B1, which is Neighborhood Business District zoning across Hill Street. And then finally, across Lincoln Avenue on the east side, single-family residential zoning. But I should probably also note, that's in an area in our Crystal Lake neighborhood plan, and also with our Carl Hospital plans. In the long run, it's recognized as an area for future expansion for Carl campus. Having said that, that's not something by right that would take some special approvals, but it is an area that, in the long term, both the city and Carl have agreed to consider for future expansion. And that's strictly on the east side of Lincoln Avenue. The comprehensive plan, and we always look to the comprehensive plan for guidance on each rezoning case. And in this case, the pink that you see along Lincoln Avenue, that's actually community business. It's shown in the comprehensive plan, future land use is community business for that entire block. And then notation there in the comprehensive plan is promote community business that can serve university population and immediate neighborhood. I would add that as part of the comprehensive plan, the formation of the plan itself, we held neighborhood meetings in each neighborhood, which it did include a meeting in King School as well. That was back in two thousand, in late two thousand and four, if I have that correctly. I just mentioned about the B2 Neighborhood Business District and the uses. Probably something else I should mention, too, is the development regulations, what that would allow. The development regulations for B2 Neighborhood Business District is more restrictive than your, the B3 General Business District. It allows, it places a cap or a limit on how intensive the property can be used. It's less intensive than a B3 General Business District. And again, it's kind of a bridge between, that's what I would, how I would describe it, kind of a bridge between residential and commercial properties. Having said that, it still allows commercial development, and some people just may not want to own a residence adjoining or backing up to B2 Neighborhood Business District. It's just, that's a concern for a lot of people. I should probably explain that in two thousand and eight, we had a very similar application from the applicant, Mr. Wakelin. And at that time, he owned eight of nine properties under consideration for zoning. The Plan Commission, that was for B3U, for, for, I'm sorry, I'm going to make sure I have the district name correctly. B3U, General Business University District. And at that time, after taking public comments, the Plan Commission felt like that, although the comprehensive plan recommended for commercial zoning in this corridor, that it wasn't quite ripe, so to speak, it wasn't quite ready to rezone to B3U, which is a higher intensity use, it allows much greater range of uses, much taller buildings, much larger buildings. And they suggested to Mr. Wakelin that if he should continue to engage property owners and see if he could acquire more property, that it might be helpful, because in that way, you wouldn't have a pattern of, ownership pattern that could be a problem. And since that time, Mr. Wakelin has tried to contact property owners, has purchased one additional property, and has made contact with other property owners since that time. What we've also heard as part of the public deliberations here, first the Plan Commission, then tonight, two, those two property owners that are under consideration for zoning, both of them said that they don't have an interest in selling. They both wish to continue for a single-family residential. I should probably add again that B2 zoning would allow single-family by right. So, if property were zoned B2, a homeowner could continue to use it for as long as they chose to, under that zoning. Having said that, rezoning the entire area to B2 Neighborhood Business District would allow commercial to be in close proximity to these homes. So, that's something to take into consideration. The, actually, the Plan Commission held a public hearing on December twentieth, twenty twelve. And following deliberation, in a public hearing and deliberation, they voted five in favor and zero against recommending approval for B2 Neighborhood Business District zoning. Now, I suppose at this time, I should probably just ask if anyone has any questions about the background on the case or the considerations.
Dennis Roberts?
I only had a question about, really, maybe sort of tangential. Across the street, you're talking about the Carl expansion district on the comprehensive Does Carl own the entire block? You're, currently, they're all, they remain residential units, but
Right.
Does Carl own all the, those units? And are they now being rented to people? Or are those still, do you know if they're still being lived in by homeowner owners?
About, I have the addresses here of the properties owned, Carl owns in that block. And I'd say it's probably about eighty-five percent of the properties in that block on the east side of
Right.
Of Lincoln Avenue.
Robert, there are five properties on the east side.
Directly on the east side.
Directly on the east side. Between Church and Hill. Two are empty.
Okay.
So, they either own eighty percent or they own sixty percent.
Right. Of those five, they own a hundred percent.
They own all five of those houses.
Right.
Across, all five of those lots, then. Okay, directly across.
It might be worth pointing out that in the Carl case, we did have a public meeting and a workshop, and we ended up saying that if there is residential property that's replaced, it has to be, you know, more residential property has to be located in that neighborhood someplace else, so that the total amount of residential property would not be reduced.
Okay, thanks.
Just one clarification. There was, in, in an earlier meeting, the Plan Commission vote was five to two, but the people who voted against the rezoning in that earlier meeting were not able to attend the December twentieth meeting, apparently because of vacation plans.
Yes, there was actually two different cases. That was a very similar case concerning the same properties the month before November. And just to explain a little bit, the original application that we received was to, was like the two thousand and eight case. It was to rezone it from R2, Single Family Residential, to B3U, which was that University Zoning District. And in that case, the Plan Commission voted five in favor and two against, to recommend B2, General Business District zoning, and against the B3U. And sent, after that time, though, the applicant, for procedural reasons, withdrew that case and resubmitted for just B2, General Business District. And the reason, the reason being that it was, in order to legally, it's more legally defensible for everyone concerned if the noticing clearly reflected B2 for everyone concerned if the noticing clearly reflected B2 zoning, if that's what the applicant desired.
Am I correct that the overall purpose of the B2 zoning is to provide neighborhood businesses that would primarily serve the nearby area, as opposed to, you know, central business areas like downtown, where people would, you know, come from, from all over? Is that correct?
Right. According to zoning ordinance, the B2 zoning district is intended to provide areas of limited size along arterial streets, in close proximity to low-density residential areas, for a limited range of basic commercial trade and personal services. And based on that definition of zoning ordinance, the Plan Commission thought it was a pretty good fit for the zoning.
Now, do you think it's appropriate to take into account the wishes of neighbors who would be presumably the people who would be using those services in those businesses, as well as the, as well as the people actually in the neighborhood to be, in the area to be rezoned?
I do. You know, I think it's really beneficial to hold a public hearing, and obviously, and hear from people that would be affected. I think that the owners of the properties that are being directly affected carry a lot of weight. Adjoining properties also carry a lot of weight as well. But I think we should take into consideration everyone who has an idea or opinion.
How would, how would you weigh, as a planner, how would you weigh the interests of an absentee property owner versus the interests of a resident?
Well, I guess a couple of things. First, how would, how is it going to affect the residence quality of life, and also the property values?
Correct.
And I think those are, those are two big considerations. Quality of life, it's, could conceivably affect the quality of life. I should probably mention that, in order to develop for neighborhood commercial, it requires additional setbacks and buffering, if it's adjoining residential. So the practical effect of that is that for properties that are still in use of single-family residential, especially if they're over in the corner of the property, that area is just not going to be able to be developed and used for that, for commercial purposes. It's going to have to, those corners like that are practically speaking, would remain unused for commercial purposes. But then there's also, in addition to quality of life, there's also considerations for On one hand, you could say that a single-family residential redevelopment around their, of business may not be beneficial for residential property values, but on the other hand, it could be beneficial for resale, for commercial.
Is it appropriate for, to begin discussion?
Yeah, make a motion. Well, I think we can have a motion, and then have a discussion. Do you want to make a motion, Charlie?
No, I have some more questions for Robert.
Okay, go ahead.
Robert, you touched on the status of Church Street. Are we even maintaining the street at this point?
When I drove it down at last, it's a paved street, but it's very narrow. I don't recall that it has curb and gutter, but it's a, it's a narrow paved street. What's that?
It does have curb and gutter?
No, I don't believe it has curb and gutter. It does not have, really have a turnaround, it's not a cul-de-sac there.
It's just dead ends in the dirt, right.
Yeah.
Does, is there space to put in a full two-lane road connecting Church to the other side there? Or is the property at the Hill Street Court cut it off completely? I can't quite tell from the overhead.
The right-of-way is narrow, and Public Works Director could probably tell us about what we take to bring the street up to city standards.
It's not going to help.
Okay, it's not, not quite clear from the overhead how much, how big the right-of-way is.
Okay. Another question I have is, why B2 and not B1? B1, you know, you've got B1 further up, further north on Lincoln, right there. Why is this a B2 as opposed to B1?
Well, I think B2 is another possibility as well. The specific application was for B2, the neighborhood business, and that's what was under consideration by the Plan Commission.
Did the Plan Commission, I didn't see anything about B1 in the Plan Commission discussion here as an alternative. I know they talked about B3U, and then they pushed, you know, then they talked about B2, but, but was there any, I don't recall anything about B1? And the pluses or minuses of B1 versus B2?
They didn't really talk about B1 that much. They really talked about B3U versus B2, and also B3 as well.
What, what are the additional limitations of B1?
One second here. Well, in the, B1, which is a neighborhood business district, it's even less intense in terms of how tall the buildings can be, and how large the buildings can be. The setbacks are similar to B2, and so I'd have to look at the table of uses to compare the two uses allowed in both districts.
So, but the buffer requirements are the same in B1 and B2?
Yeah, they're pretty similar between B1 and B2.
Okay, that was one of my other questions, so that's, that answers that. So one of the differences is the height. I think it's 35 in B2, is that it? Can be 35 feet tall?
B2, it's 35 feet.
Okay, which is?
B1, it's also 35 feet.
Ah, okay.
And B1 Neighborhood Business District, basically, you could cover a third of the lot with a one-story building? I mean, that's the sort of intensity that we're talking about.
So it's more the size of the building as opposed to the uses of the building?
It's both. There's, I have a zoning description sheet here for B1, so it would allow, let's see B1 would allow apartments like multifamily residential, single-family residential duplexes. It would allow churches, daycare. All of those actually are conditional uses. But what's allowed by right, things like personal services, like a barber shop or beauty shop, health or fitness club, laundry, shoe repair, churches, temple or mosque, that's allowed by, by right, libraries and museums, parks, and then some retail business like clothing store, bicycle sales and service, florist, hardware store, jewelry store, music store. Those are sorts of the uses that are allowed in B1.
Mayor, I think I almost want to indicate a point of order.
Yes.
All right. First of all, I think it's misleading to start talking about a B1 at this point, because we haven't been asked to discuss it. The petitioners asked for a B2. And I'd like to clarify the history of how that evolved through the Planning Commission, because I had a, something to do with it. The Planning Commission was approached by Mr. Wakeland in this instance to allow a B3 business in this property. And the Planning Commission was concerned that it was perhaps a larger than, would have a larger impact than, than they envisioned perhaps was healthy for the block. And so through the discussion of the Planning Commission, they decided not to support B3, which was Mr. Wakeland's desire. And what they did is they proposed, and they voted on, changing the level of the zoning to B2. And that was what was being forwarded to the city council. And when I read it in the packet, I asked, as a point of law, whether it was appropriate that the commission make a change in their, in their decision that was contrary to the original request of the petitioner. And the reason why I brought that up was because, in the previous month's discussion, the chairman of the Planning Commission said that the discussion had to be about the request of the petitioner, and not extraneous thoughts, that it was the petitioner's request that was being adjudicated, not, it wasn't, it was not a free-for-all. I see us now entering the same murky waters. And I think it's inappropriate, and it doesn't do justice to Mr. Wakeland to be second-guessing what would be an appropriate, better solution for the problem, based on a different kind of zoning request. Mr. Wakeland has asked for B2. And the only reason why Mr. Wakeland is asking for B2 is because realizing that there was a legal problem with the decision of the Planning Commission, his request was withdrawn, he went back to the Planning Commission and asked for the B2, because he realized he had support for that. So now, we're, should not be discussing alternative solutions, we should be educating whether this is an appropriate zoning for this property. And saying that, if there was going to be a motion made, and I guess I am ready to make a motion.
Last question.
Yeah, all right. Charlie, if you could make a last question.
Can we, can we have a motion first? Because I think we really should have a motion before we have a discussion.
Then, I'm afraid, if I'm going to make the motion, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion to defeat ordinance number 2013-01-004, as it stands and as it's written, for numerous reasons, which I will discuss if we have a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Eric Jacobson. And Charlie, you have a question.
Yeah, my, and I think Bill was going to answer one of the other questions, a question for you, Robert, was, are we able to rezone a subset of these properties at this time? Or does it have to go back to the Plan Commission? It's my understanding, in talking to Libby earlier today, that we could do that.
The legal advice that we've been given in the past is that, yes, we could rezone a subset, as long as the, that area is encompassed within the area that's advertised, and that everyone's aware of the, you know, the maximum possible area that could be rezoned. That's been our legal advice that we've received in the past.
And then, were you going to answer? And then Bill was going to answer my other question, if that's okay.
I have one question.
Okay.
If Church Street is determined to be the best access to this property, who has the responsibility for actually reconstructing that to city standards?
Would you care to answer that, Bill?
Sure, I'll try to answer a couple of questions here.
Yeah, you've got several questions going on here.
This is public right-of-way, it's about half of a right-of-way, it's not a full right-of-way that we typically have. The city does maintain it, it's a low-type, a chip-and-seal type street. Currently, it's serving one active driveway, one active property right now. With respect to improving the street to something other than what it is currently, unless there's subdividing that's going on, or something that would require an extension of a street or a new street, that's usually a developer cost, if the lots are the way they are, it's probably going to remain as is, and it just gets into the priority of anything else with a capital improvement plan for a street. A local street like this would be a, you know, a low priority for improvement, unless there was, like we have in the past, block rent money have upgraded a lot of streets. So there's no plans to upgrade this street. We would maintain it as a chip-and-seal street. We only have half a right-of-way to begin with, so it's, it doesn't really allow us to fully, you know, build a normal residential and local street.
Okay, and then you had a question that Charlie had asked?
Yes.
Oh, we already answered it, okay. Brandon?
A quick follow-up question, Bill, for you on that, on that same topic. So given this half right-of-way and the chip-and-seal street that doesn't quite go the whole way, those three vacant parcels at 906, 908, 910 West Church, if theoretically, we were to rezone them and someone were to want to build some B2-type commercial use back there, does this half right-of-way, this very narrow chip-and-seal street, West Church Street, provide sufficient access for any kind of commercial driveway?
Not knowing the use and the number of trips, my guts is probably it would, it would be fine. I mean, it's not much different than a commercial driveway into any other B2 or, you know, related type land use. I don't see that as a showstopper, really.
Okay, so there's room for two cars to pass?
Oh, yeah.
People could get in and get out?
I think so. Yes.
Take the mirrors and turn them in.
Okay, is there anyone else who wants to comment on this? And we have a motion to defeat this ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
And should I speak to it?
Sure.
All right. All right, and, and I think, you know, I had, I had some, I looked at the, well, basically, what I did is I went out and I looked at the neighborhood, and it reminds me so much of some of the experiences we've had in the East Urban, historic East Urban neighborhood, the Huna neighborhood, especially along Elm Street. You know, and of course, part of our neighborhood is on Main Street, and part of it's on Vine, and of course, you know, there is commercial buildings along Main Street. But the streets right behind it have experienced replacement of individual, single-family homes, residential homes, by the construction of larger apartments, you know, five or seven plexes or eightplexes. And the result is that it's extremely hard now for the single-family homeowners on Elm Street to successfully sell their houses. And some of the houses have been up for sale and then taken off the market, and I've talked to a couple of the residents along there. So what I'm, what I'm saying is that, that mixing the neighborhood usually results in hardship to the homeowners that are still single-family residential. And if this property lot, if these, if this configuration of these 11 lots were more advantageously proportioned, I would have a lot less trouble with this, because after all, this is on Lincoln Avenue. But because of the position of the two lots, which are not in Mr. Wakeland's ownership, I don't see how any Lincoln Avenue-facing business can be built, you know, which is really the intent of, you know, of the rezoning, is to put business properties on Lincoln Avenue. But we have got, you know, an inset property to the north, and one on Lincoln itself, and these people have expressed a lack of interest to make, to sell. And up until this time, we really haven't heard from the neighborhood, so I truly appreciate Viola Bradley's, you know, arrival here tonight to speak as one of those property owners. I think without hearing the voice of the people who live right there, and whose property is about to be changed from under them, I don't think we have a way of really understanding the importance that this has on individuals and on family owners. So, that said, and if the, if the council would be kind enough to bear with me, I want to just go over a few points, which I think also have to do with how the failure, really the, how this proposal fails to meet the criteria of the LaSalle agreement, or the LaSalle standards, which I know that the Planning Commission didn't seem to bring this up, but I just feel like there's a, you know, an issue here. One other thing is that, say that the land that was owned by Mr. Wakeland, which is clearly his and empty, was developed as business, or perhaps it might become, you know, like an eightplex apartment building, which is, you know, a residential dwelling for multiple families, and that, you know, maybe that would fit in this neighborhood, I don't know, but you'd also have parking, and you'd have to have a parking, parking lot around it, and you'd have to have lighting, and then you'd have to raise, I think, six to eight-foot fences to shield that from the residential homes. And then I'm trying, I'm looking at the, the signature of a lot, and how awkward that would be to fence off the houses that remained. It would It would just be so much fencing, and it would be very, it would be a bizarre construction of fencing to make this development possible. So, mainly, when it comes down to the LaSalle criteria, I just had a couple of, I just, I guess I just differ with the result of the commission's findings. So, and I sent you an email about this this afternoon. Leading to criteria one, and this regards the compatibility of the proposed zoning with the single-family residential neighborhood, the last paragraph of the staff summary states, quote, "On the other hand, the rezoning would allow development at a higher density than currently permitted, which may present a conflict with the two properties not owned by the petitioner, if they were to remain single-family residences." Well, we know that they do intend to remain single-family residences. And the only way that, that it would actually benefit those residences is if, by the rezoning, we pretty much were forcing them to sell out. And I don't think that's really the intent, or the, or the, I don't think the city council is really in the job of making people move to create a development project. I don't think that that's what our intent is, and we shouldn't be pursuing that. Relating to criteria two, regarding to the extent to which the property values are diminished, the developer states that the proposed zoning, rezoning, would allow him to develop the properties at a higher density and use, which is great for him. Therefore, the property values of the, of the subject properties would logically increase. Yeah, they'd be worth more if they were sold to somebody like the developer. But it is also likely that the two residential properties that are not owned by the petitioner would decrease in value as home family, as single-family residences. And that's exactly what we found is true in the East Urban neighborhood. A really excellent two-story home on a certain corner was sold for about half its value, because they just couldn't, you know, keep it on the market for two years. And it was right across from, you know, semi-commercial and high-density apartments. All right, so I'm going down to criteria number four in the LaSalle criteria. Regarding the relative gain to the public as compared to the hardship imposed on the individual property owner, quote, "The proposed rezoning would allow for a wider mix of uses at a higher density on the site." Well, that's great. But this is the only true, this is only true for the petitioner, the developer, and certainly not true for the single-family resident property owner. So, quote, "Do the restrictions promote the public welfare in some significant way so as to offset any hardship imposed by the property owner, by the restrictions?" That's one of the questions of the criteria. And, and I don't think that, you know, it meets it. I don't think that it offsets it well enough. I think that really, these people are going to get stuck. Stuck with property that perhaps in the future, they're not going to be able to resell. And criteria of number five, regarding the suitability of a subject property for the zone purposes. So, after some discussion of Lincoln Avenue being a redeveloping corridor and allowing removal of residential driveways, which is, you know, one of the things that the city staff and the public works department would feel more comfortable about having fewer driveways emptying onto this busy street, I'm thinking that staff, staff says, "However, this proposed development could negatively impact any remaining single-family residence, residential properties on the block." And finally, criteria number six, the length of time the property has remained vacant as zoned. Well, we have a person who has been purchasing property and removing houses, and there's not really an intent of doing anything else on those, those properties until all of the properties become available for redevelopment as a wonderful block along Lincoln Avenue. And so, we cannot really say that the fact that there's certain vacant lots, and they've been vacant for a long time, is a very good use of criteria, because I don't think it's been the owner's intent to do anything about them until yet more property became available. Now, somebody in the audience said that this would be a great, Bernardine Stakes said that this would be a great place to put in some affordable housing. Well, we cannot tell the developer what to do with this property. And, you know, it may not be his view, or his vision, to put affordable housing there. But I would say that if, if it wasn't planned for a large-scale development or a more complex development, certainly, these lots would be the ideal location for affordable housing units, built such as by Habitat for Humanity, or some of our other Chodos. So, if the lots were freed up for those uses, or purchased by somebody who cared to do that, that would make a complete sense. But we don't know if that's going to happen or not. And I don't really have anything really wrong, I don't, I don't really, I don't really blame the developer for looking at this property and seeing its potential. But what I'm, what my suggestion is that, that it's not ready yet, and I don't think that because, because there's two property owners who have no intention of selling at this point, and actually, I've said that they've sort of been harassed. And actually, I did talk to Viola Bradley's husband one time, when he was coming in and out of a shift, and he said that, now, if I get this right, I believe I was right, that actually, he would, he was actually called or approached at work, which I don't think is really appropriate, for the very same reason. So, given all this, I just don't think this is the right time to approve this, this zoning change, and so, when I made the recommendation to defeat it, it's based on these issues.
Okay, I do have cards filled out by three individuals in opposition to this ordinance. Etha Reed, 1307 Tremont, Shirley Hersi, 1309 Ellis Drive, and Bishop King James Underwood, 1309 West Tremont. Brandon?
Yeah, I, Dennis, I think tonight on this one, you and I are totally on the same page. I had underlined the exact same sentences, and I think this just doesn't meet the criteria for, for rezoning, many of the criteria, as Dennis had pointed out. I mean, I do agree with Mr. Bradfield, the speaker earlier, who said that Mr. Wakeland's developments are very high-quality. That's absolutely true. But that's not the criteria we're given to make these zoning judgment calls based on. So, based on simply the, the facts of this case and the criteria we have to consider, I don't support this rezoning at this time. So, I'll be voting yes on this motion to defeat.
Eric Jacobson.
You know, just as you had this experience on the east side of town, our neighborhood went through this a couple of decades ago on West Main Street. And we were, at that time, the city plan said that this whole area from Lincoln Avenue to downtown, down through West Main Street, the comprehensive plan said that should be high development. And we said no. We came to council, we argued against the staff at that time, who whipped out their urban planning degrees, and said, no, on our checkerboard, this, but, but we said that, no, the, we argued that, that people are more important than squares on a map. And, and I'm so grateful to the council, and I believe, Bernardine, that you perhaps were on the council at that time. And so, and grateful to you and your colleagues for that. So, so I do want to say to Ms. Bradley and, and about the Connerlys, that, you know, nobody really feels somebody else's pain, but I, I feel, I empathize with the, with the sense of threat that, that you feel about this. I'm not a person who's completely against progress. I voted for lots and lots and lots of development in the couple of years that, that I've been on the council. But I think the wheels of progress shouldn't be permitted to, to crush individuals unfairly. And while, while Mr. Wakeland has the majority of the financial investment in these properties, I think between the Connerlys and, and Ms. Bradley, they have by far the bulk of the personal investment in these properties. And so, so for, for these reasons, and, and, and in a certain sense reluctantly, because I have tremendous respect for you, Robert, and for your staff work, and I think that, given the criteria that you are working under, you know, the sort of the abstract outlines of the plan, I, I think that there might be a, maybe we ought to revisit those criteria, because the, our criteria are to meet human needs. I guess the other thing I want to say is that, and this was the purpose of my query about neighborhood business, is that even people who are not on this block, but the people who live nearby, and would presumably be patrons of the businesses that might be put there, they don't see that as an advantage either. So, so, so they, they wish the properties to remain in the single-family residential flavor that they currently have. So, for, for these variety of reasons, I will be, I will be voting yes for the motion to defeat.
Okay. Did you want to say something, Robert?
Yes, last one. Well, I've had a busy day in talking to people in the neighborhood, and trying to assess how this is going in my mind. I don't have a big problem with it, but I think the, the concerns of the people prevail. And I think that it's important to take into consideration those folks that are vested in the area, and I put a lot of stock in what they have to say, so I will be voting to defeat as well.
Okay, we have a motion by Dennis Roberts, seconded by Eric Jacobson, to defeat ordinance number 2013-01-004. Charlie?
Yeah, I was, I'd like to add a little, a few couple of things here. It's, this is not an easy case, you know, and, you know, and I absolutely support affordable housing. I don't want to remove viable, viable existing homes along Hill, for example. But we have three properties that, along Church, that are vacant. They haven't been maintained for, for years by, by the previous owners, had to be torn down essentially, and they face the water plant. That's the complication here, is, and across the street, you've got Carl developing, you've got two empty lots on the other side, but you have three existing houses there. You have existing houses along Lincoln. So, I think that all makes it very, very difficult. We could consider sending this to committee and look at a subset of this for rezoning. The problem is that 703 is smack in the middle of what you would rezone. And unless you were willing to do a 703, include 703 in the rezoning, it's probably not worth the effort. But, but clearly, 906, 908, 910, maybe 701, at some point, probably deserve a different zoning. I'm not sure, you know, Dennis thinks that maybe they could be redone as housing under something like Habitat for Humanity. I, I sort of doubt it. Not up against the water plant across the street. You could do development. We do have some pretty considerable buffer requirements in B2, and I wanted to know if B1 had the same. You know, it's very, they're very similar zonings. You know, so there's quite a bit of, you know, so if you were to exclude 703, for example, from a B2 zoning, you know, you'd have to put a big buffer around it. So, that would make it fairly difficult. And then, I think it's also, but it, but I, here's, here's my final thought, is that I think it's premature to change much of the zoning in here in advance of understanding and approving, which we would need to do, any Carl development on the other side of the street. So, you know, I think this is something that we need to continue discussing with the public, but it may be, you know, the Carl thing's a 20-year plan out there, sitting out there. So, this is, this is a long-term issue, and I'm sure it's going to come back to us in the future.
Did, Robert Lewis?
One other concern, and I, I found it kind of odd when somebody brought the issue up with the area on the, on the map. And that was kind of interesting, that people felt that their interest came second to the university, the way it was written. They took exception to that. So, that's in the, in the master plan. So, maybe that was the impetus for, you know, the, for the movement towards this area, whatever, when it was initially started. But again, the people took exception to that. And I would hope that that, that notation be changed in some way.
Diane?
This was, this is a really, really difficult case. I came into the meeting, I spent time in the neighborhood this morning, walking around. I came into the meeting prepared to vote to approve this because, well, just for various reasons, but after hearing folks from the neighborhood talking and offering very compelling arguments against it, I, I'm having second thoughts. But the fact of the matter is, Mr. Wakeland owns all but two of these parcels, and all these houses that we see here at 909, 907, 905, and 707 could be gone tomorrow, should, should they decide to take them down. And then, there would be, and 701, Lincoln, so there would be no housing on that two-acre parcel, except for the two that our owner occupy, in which case, you're left with, what? Nothing there. Less affordable housing entries. So, I think there are other options for rezoning, based on what I was reading in the transcript. Mr. Connerly, when asked point-blank, was he opposed to B2, he said, no, he was more concerned with potential uses. So, I don't think there was outright opposition to the B2 zoning from the owner of 703, Lincoln. So, I think there's, there probably are some options still out there that would, that, that we might be able to work something out, and I could see going back, maybe going back to the drawing board.
Dennis, did you want to say?
Yeah, you know, I helped form the Historic East Urban Neighborhood Association, and one of the reasons why we did it was, we saw the erosion of our neighborhood, and the, and the, it was a really, it was the initial, the initial cause for founding that neighborhood association was the taking down of a small cottage, and we, and all of a sudden, we realized that a five-plex was being built on that corner. And also, that the setback was, was not adhered to. And nobody had created or prepared for a variance to the setback. It just had happened by the developer. He just built his foundation in the wrong place, maybe because he thought that was a great place for it. And most recently, we decided to step back from, I think, you know, a very reasonable discussion and consideration of roundabout. And why did we do that? Because residents in the nearby area really came out and said that it was really not good for them. I don't see any difference tonight. You know, we, we respected the need for hearing the individual voice that night, and I think we have to respect it this night. In the future, maybe in two months, or two years, there may be a discussion again about this corner, and maybe conditions will have changed. I think that any kind of discussion about worrying about what's on the east side of Lincoln is really moot to this, because Lincoln is a large enough street, and wide enough to become basically a barrier, and it has really, very little effect about the housing on that side. Doesn't have that much effect on the housing on the west side. And my, and my vote really is to preserve neighborhoods, because I think neighborhoods, and the strength of neighborhoods are the strength of this community and this town. And I like business, and I think it makes sense to put business in sensible places. And maybe down the road, you know, there'll be ownership changes, and that's fine. And that's when this property will really be ripe. But tonight, it's not for me, and I appreciate the support effort on council to approve my motion.
Okay, would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes, to defeat.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Next, we have a closed session on property acquisition issues. Is there a motion? Charlie?
Second.
Okay. Would the clerk please call the roll? We have a motion and a second to go into closed session for property acquisition. Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
Is there a motion to go back into open session?
So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, a motion by Charlie Smythe, seconded by Dennis Roberts, to go back into open session. Would the clerk please call the roll? Okay, next item is ordinance number 2013-01-005, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at 1208 and a half West Dublin Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Diane Marlin, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
Okay, next item is ordinance number 2013-01-005, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of certain real estate at 1208 and a half West Dublin Street.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Diane Marlin, seconded by Dennis Roberts. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Bowersox Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
Mayor Pressing?
Yes.
And I did get some cards at the end from people who are in support of the letter to the mayor and the council concerning the Dr. Ellis subdivision, Bishop King James Underwood, Shirley Hersi, Etha Reed, and William F., or William V. Renfro.